All right, the time is now 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the Town of Plainfield Board of Selectmen meeting to order at 7:00 PM and ask that you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, with its hands, one, on your god, in this world of liberty and justice for all. Okay, item B, roll call.
All right, Kevin.
Kevin Cunningham.
Becky Hewitt.
And I don't see Kathy on as of yet, so we'll continue on. Item C, the approval of the minutes from June 30th, not June 13th, right?
No, July 13th.
I'm sorry, June, I'm thinking June, July 13th.
Yeah. Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second. Okay, I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item D, public comment. Anybody from the public comments tonight? If not, we can go right into old business, and there is old business, because we did talk about, at the last meeting, we talked about the high school roof and the issues that we had there with Forefront, so I just wanted to touch on this for a few minutes if we can, and I do appreciate the fact we do have some members of the Board of Finance here, so we can talk about what we've been continually talking about for a little while. It has been an issue with, going forward with the plan, the plan was to continue on with the rooftops on Plainfield Memorial, Plainfield Central, and the high school, and we're working with Forefront. The concern was that, you know, we can go forward with the contract as we thought we were going to be able to do, but there are some issues that have been coming up, so we wanted to make sure we informed the public of that, we wanted to work with a solution that is a viable solution for all, and Kathy had asked at the last meeting, because we asked, well, what questions do we have? So, the questions that came forth was, there were five of them from Kathy, what was the warranty on the roof? The roof was built with the school in the year 2005, it's a 20-year warranty, so two years ago, the company had gone on, Forefront had gone on to the roof to see the status of the roof, two years ago, they said it was okay. Now, just recently, we heard that Forefront had gone on the roof again and said that it's not in good condition. So, as a warranty issue, we have a concern with that, so reaching out to the other company, it would cost as much money to go forward with fixing what the roof would be, even though it's under warranty, there's certain things, there's stuff to be liability issues. I will get to the end result of this at the end of the conversation here, but I'll bring us back to that. The second question was Paul Maschad contacted, and have I discussed it with him? Absolutely. Paul Maschad, if you remember, is the person who came to the Town of Plainfield to explain what we've benefits of having solar roofs, and so we were working with Mr. Paul Maschad because he is the attorney for the Town of Plainfield in regards to this item. So, we have been in contact with him. Why was this an issue last year? That's an unknown. I don't know why there was not a follow-up and continuation on this, but in any event, Forefront says now that the roof is not viable to go forward, and so, why we would let just Forefront do the work, and there's a bid process that to follow, and explain what they were doing. They came to the Town of Plainfield, and they said that they would pay for a roof to be placed on, an overlay roof portion to be placed on the high school roof. And when we're talking about this particular portion of the roof, it is the flat portions of it, which is the auditorium area, the cafeteria area, and the gym. So, those were the areas that were proposed to say that they weren't good, that they needed to have some structural changes, in other words, an overlay. So, it's not a bid issue really, but there is an issue, because if Forefront had gone forward with that particular plan, our problem was that Forefront would have the warranty. So, it kind of messes things up, because it really should be a town warranty, and it should be something we can go back on later on. What if Forefront goes out of business between now and who knows when? So, that's the concerns we have, one of the concerns, one of the many. And then, do we have another roofing company look at the roof? This came up, as you remember, two weeks ago, so no, we have not had a company go out there. I think what we'd like to do, as a plan, to go forward is to talk about all of the issues that we have in front of us, what things we have to deal with. I talked to Ken Di Pietro today about that, and spoke to Tom about it as well. I think what we'd like to do is just go through the process of what we have to do to make that roof something sustainable for 20 years, and that way, if we decide to go up with solar panels on that roof, then they're good for those 20 years, and we don't have to worry about it as much. You're still worried about things going up there and checking it. There were some other structural issues that came forward that we didn't, weren't really brought to the table in earnest, and that was, it was brought to my attention from Ken, that, and you heard it at the last Board of Finance meeting, you also heard it at the last Board of Education meeting, that when there's snow on that roof for the gym area, that when they go to push the button for the panels to close in the gym, that there's enough weight on there where they don't close. So, that's an engineering issue that should be looked at, and before we go forward. It doesn't help us to put an overlay on there and then have more problems. So, I think it might be best if we all sit down and talk about what might be the right thing to do. One of the things that came up was, if we went to the state of Connecticut, we could ask them for reimbursement on a new roof of those areas right there, and that would come back at a 75% reimbursable rate. There's still an issue with the total length of the warranty that we have right now, so they just undo another calculation on that, how much we would get back. I asked Ken to do some homework for us, and Ken is going to do that, he's going to go out, get the paperwork ready, but he's also going to talk to the state of what the reimbursable rate would be, based on what we have currently, and by the time we actually put in any paperwork. But it really isn't a decision that we should make, you know, solely one person. It should be the Town of Plainfield sitting down, the Board of Education, the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, sitting down and doing what's right for the Town of Plainfield. So, at this point, I talked to Forefront, and we're holding off on doing any of that work. We are going to wait until we sit down as a town to come forward with the proper plan. So, I think that would be appropriate to do, and I know that Ken's on board with that, and I'm pretty sure that Tom and I'm sure other members of the Board of Finance would like to see discussions on that, and to bring that forward. So, unless there's any other item for discussion for old business on that particular item, we can move forward. Art, you have anything? Okay.
This would be a town meeting.
Yeah, it would be something we have to talk about, and we talked about this before, about having all three boards have a joint meeting, so we can openly talk about these items, and see what we can come to a resolution on something. We have to get more data first, obviously. So, yeah, and eventually go to a town. It depends on the cost of the roof, I mean, if we ballpark what a new roof would cost in that section over there, if it was 75% reimbursable, and you're talking about, you know, $600,000 or so, you know, you're going to get a good chunk of it paid for you, but the town still needs to know how much they're liable for, and what the actual percentage is going to be that will be covered. So, let's get the information first, in my opinion, let's get that information first, share it with each other, maybe come up with some other ideas, but it's something we need to talk about, so we're not going to go forward as of right now.
So, you're thinking two meetings? One with the three boards, and then one town meeting?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Okay, so with that, if we want to move on, we can go into new business. Item number one, there is a change in the number, and it's off by a dollar, thank you for catching that, Art. So, it's Consider an Act on Tax Refunds as requested by the tax collector, and it should be $216.89, as follows, Jesse Solar, and that's the change, it was 137.27, it should be 136.27, another one for Heidi J. Ray for 54.50, and a third one for Michael J. McCracken, 26.12.
I'll make a motion that we accept the tax refund for 116.89.
And for those.
Going to Jesse Solar for 136.27, Heidi Ray for 54.50, and Michael J. McCracken for 26.12.
Motion's been made, I will second that motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item up is, and we happen to have on the discussion for this also to help us out, if we have any questions, Marianne Channati's on the line, but we have item number two, Consider an Act on a Resolution Authorizing the First Selectmen to Execute an Affordable Housing Technical Assistance Grant Award. So, if you see it in your packet on item number two. I am not even going to try to pronounce the name of the person who gave us the packet here, but PTC, I'll go by that, but this person forwarded over to us to, for the opportunity for a grant, and you'll see that the grant award is listed on the next few pages for $15,000. Marianne, if you have a second, if you want to unmute yourself and add anything to this, this would be the time to do that.
Well, it's just, to refresh the memories, we requested that grant because the state had mandated back along that all 169 municipalities have and update their affordable housing plans by the year 2022, and then after, they have an initial plan every five years thereafter. Plainfield does not have a plan, and even though we are at 12.58% of our properties considered affordable, quote unquote, so we don't have to comply with Statute 830G, we still need to create the Affordable Housing Plan, and the state released the announcement that funds were available to get assistance to prepare that plan. We applied for the grant, and bless Patrice's heart, she let us know we got it, so that's a good thing.
And so, this particular item that we're looking to vote on tonight would give the authorization for me to sign and forward this off.
I just had a question, Marianne.
Yeah.
Could you tell me a little bit about what the plan is, though?
I beg your pardon?
What the plan is, the Affordable Housing, what does this consist of?
What it is is...
I was just wondering where $15,000 is going, basically.
Yeah, what it's going to do is create a plan that outlines the best way to move forward to ensure that there's equal housing opportunities in town, and I've gotten draft plans from other municipalities, and I cobbled together a draft for Plainfield, but to be sure that all the i's are legally dotted, all the t's are legally crossed, when this grant came out, it makes much more sense to have professionals approved by the state help us prepare a plan, as opposed to doing it basically, not so much in a vacuum, but without the extra i's.
So, pretty much, that's what the monies go towards, just to pay the professionals?
Yeah, the money goes to pay the consultant to help us prepare the plan.
Okay.
And $15,000 was the maximum amount you could request.
Yeah, I was thinking, oh, if Marianne is going to do this, and, you know, like you just did, you found a similar plan, and you can make something up, I'm like, okay, that wouldn't take $15,000, but if you have to hire people, yes, I can understand that. So, thank you for that.
Okay, you're welcome.
Any other questions or concerns or comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion to authorize the First Selectmen to execute an Affordable Housing Technical Assistance Grant.
Make that motion.
I will second. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item number three, Consider an Act on a Resolution Authorizing the First Selectmen to Execute and Deliver, the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Management Services and Public Protection, which is a Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, all documents it seems necessary or appropriate. I can give a brief overview for this one. This was something that we hadn't done since 2006, I think it was. What it allows us to do is to put in a grant request for different materials that are needed for our emergency management team, emergency management services, and usually that is handled by our emergency management officer, and that's our fire motion at this time. So, he can, and we've done it in the past, where we've added a few items that they needed, so with all of this going on lately, this might be, this might be a good thing to help us out.
My only question on this one? Let's see, oh, there's a couple. Let me find it. The amount? The amount of $382,000, roughly? Is that for the region, where in Region 4?
Yeah, that's regional, we're not going to get, we're not going to get that.
Oh, no, no.
Yeah.
But that's what we would take out of, not the other number. At the top, number four on the memorandum of agreement?
Yep.
There's $1,600,054?
Right.
Right. So, I'm assuming that's, that's for the state, probably?
Yeah, and then there's a regional portion.
Breaking it down to $382,000, that's for this region of...
Region 4, yep, Region 4, which is actually the eastern part of the state.
Oh, the whole eastern part?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Last time, we got about maybe $12,000 out of this, which was still appropriate for what they were looking for.
Okay. That's good. And then, the only other thing on this, was the resolution itself?
Yes, I have a copy of the resolution.
The two dates are on, I believe.
All right, what date are we looking at here? Because I've got one, it's a blank one, this is July.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
July 26.
Yeah, no, this is...
2.7. So, they'll catch that, and the date you started off is, I believe, too, should be the 19th, I think.
Yep, I'll have that fixed, but really, at this point, we're just looking for the resolution authorizing the First Selectmen to Execute the Affordable Housing Technical Assistance Grant.
Yep. Well, I'll make a motion that we authorize the First Selectmen execute with the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services, Public Protection.
You're on the right, you're on the right one, wrong one, yep.
Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, all documents it seems necessary or appropriate.
All right, you made that motion, I'll second that. Any other discussion, hearing none, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, there's one more piece of documentation that you have in your packet, it's item number four, Discussion Review on the Proposed Open Space Policy. This is just basically a draft for discussion items. It was a small adoption made tonight, Marianne put together a small adoption to it, and of course, I printed it off, and I have it somewhere here, but Marianne, you have the, it was a wording that was, had to be fixed on one, dawn to dusk.
And a new number seven. Which allowed horseback riding on town-owned open space of three acres or more, because horseback riding wasn't referenced anywhere in it yet.
And that would allow it to occur, as long as it's three acres or more?
Yeah, exactly.
So, I have a question on that, would be, for the town-owned open space, would there need to be, basically, you'd have to go through whom for approval? Or...
You mean for uses?
Yes.
These are all, the resolution outlines what you can and cannot do, so you don't need to get, quote unquote, permission from anyone.
That's what I was getting at, okay, thank you. So, Art, what I'm going to do is, I'll send both you and Kathy the updated version of it, and give you at least, you know, a few weeks to look it over, so we can talk about it at the next meeting, but it's something that needs a little more detail, you're going to go look through it all, and make sure if you have any questions.
Thank you.
All right.
I didn't even see this in the book, sorry. I didn't even read this.
All right, I'll send it to you, though.
Can I just add one thing?
Sure.
This is proposed because the town owns, I went through all of the town property deeds, the town-owned parcels, and the town does own six parcels that are specified to be reserved as open space, and the town, there is nothing that says anywhere what can and can't be done on that open space. So, for example, someone had approached you, Kevin, to ask about purchase, so that he could merge it with his property and hunt on it. Well, no, but technically, he could hunt on it now, because there's nothing that says he can't, and the policy just outlines what can and can't be done, so that people know ahead of time.
So, this is new, we never had it before?
Right.
So, we can look that over, and again, we'll discuss it, and probably do the vote on it at the next meeting. Okay? All right, and then the other thing we have would be, which is other correspondence, I just wanted to let people know that there are a few things going on. We have been working on the, following the rules, the State of Connecticut, when the governor comes up with new changes and plans to what you can and cannot do, so we are trying to go forward with the music in the park. That's one item coming up, every Wednesday, there'll be a different band playing, we have it, so it's going to be actually portioned off out in the field, so we have the spacing appropriate. We have been following all the guidelines that we have to do to make sure that everybody's safe, and the Recreation Director is going to be, you know, there to monitor and make sure everything's okay. We also have coming up on the 15th of, Saturday the 15th of August, would be another Town of Plainfield-run hosting of a food and monetary donation drive for Project Penn. A few other items that are going on in town would be a Celebrate Plainfield 2020, they aren't going to be able to do their celebration as they usually do at the town park, Alliance Park, so what they're doing is a caravan ride, and they're trying to promote it and let people know that they're coming around town, so that'll be coming up on August 1st. We also have a modification to what we've all known as the BJ Parade, and that's available, if you wanted to take a look online, you can see that as well, but there will be, due to social distancing, they've moved it around a little bit. Again, this is the 75th anniversary of the BJ Parade and the end of World War II. American Legion Post 91 is intending to honor and pay tribute to the greatest generation of this historical milestone, you can find the rest of the information online, so that is something you can do. What else do we have? Excuse me, this Wednesday coming up, there is a town meeting, the annual town meeting is coming forward, and we will be talking, this is something that the Board of Finance puts together, they're going to be talking about each of the departments of the town, what happened, normally, you try to get that in November, but we're going through the audits so long, now that this is why it's going to be this late in the year. So, now that the audit's complete, Tom is going to be working on putting together with the report from the town departments, and also the auditors' report, and that'll be on Zoom as well. We'd wish, we'd like to have it at a public hearing, public meeting, but because the numbers are still 25 people inside, once you get to the number 26, you've got to shut the meeting down, so we'd like to be able to still have it. I will say that there is a way that people can vote, we talked about that already, if you take a look in the bottom of your Zoom button down there, it says reactions, there is a all in favor, you can hit the hand button, like it is up right there right now on mine, and we'll do a head count, or a hand count in that case, for those people who will be in favor. I'd have the town clerk with me to verify the numbers, we would then ask you to take that off, and then the next thing would be, for those not in favor, to raise your hands, and we'd do the same thing, we'd count all the way through. We believe this is the best way we can deal with what we have for the situation we have right now, but that's what's going to be happening on Wednesday. I, thumbs up, there we go. Thumbs up or a hand either way, as long as it doesn't eat and sign, put a symbol up there, it'll be appropriate. We can, again, this is something that we're still working on with COVID-19, we're trying our best, we really are, it's just that it's very difficult to try to have full town meetings and full hearings, and I heard from a resident today, that it was an honest question, why is it that we can't have meetings, but we can have 25, 30, you know, kids on a bus, or 40 kids on a bus? So, it's what the governor has put in front of us, and we're trying to deal with it as best we can. So, for municipality, we're trying to work around the issues and still be in compliance. That's all I think I have for today, let me make sure I go over my notes real quick.
Are we going to try to have department heads Wednesday night?
If they'd like to go, because just in case there is a consent, question or a concern, because in the public can ask a direct question through the chair, I don't think that's a problem, but I think it's pretty well laid out, and there'll be copies, hard copies of it being bound as we speak. I'm going to print off some other copies of it while we're waiting for the bound copies, if anybody wanted to have a few copies, I'll put them in the town clerk's office, so they'll be available there, so there is an opportunity to follow along. I know some of the, some of the, the print is a little fine on the screen, that's why I want to be able to have it, so it's, people can read along, but it should be pretty straightforward, and I know the one for the auditors is easy to read, because it's a smaller print and fewer pages, so. All right, I think we're good, I don't think there's anything else going on. Other than that, if there's something else to talk about, I think if you want to make a motion to adjourn?
I will make that motion.
Motion to adjourn, I will second, and the time now is 7:26, I'll see you in a few minutes over at the Water Pollution Control Meeting, for anybody that would like to participate. Thank you. I'd like to call this Town of Plainfield Water Pollution Control Authority meeting to order, this is July 27th, and we've just finished our select meeting, so we'll go right into the Water Pollution Control Meeting, call to order.
All right, Kevin.
Kevin Cunningham. And it looks like Becky's trying to get back in.
Yeah.
Becky, you're here, right?
Just on mute.
Ah, yeah, we're on mute, Becky, and let hers talk. Becky, you're here, right?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yep, now you're good, okay, thanks.
Yeah, my computer was messing up, so I went on my phone.
Thank you. So, we'll go right into the minutes, approval of minutes from the previous meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from July 30th, 2020 meeting.
Art's made the motion, I will second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item D, we do have public comment, anybody has a comment for tonight? Hearing none, we go in. This is for 653 651 Norwich Road. So, this is, as you see in front of you, one. So, there's a controller for the complex asking for the sewage to be adjusted and refunded for overpayments, line 90 of 2019, January 2020, and there is a letter attached, if you have the time to take a minute to go through that letter.
I do.
This does happen on occasion, and Becky knows, she's seen a couple come through, so there's basically a reduction in the use, so that's why the request is there. So, if it was to be approved, it would be for $5,927.60. Have any questions on this one?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the refund of $5,927.60, and adjust the, we can do it in one motion, right? Adjust the sewage use rate to four.
Four units?
Effective July 1st, 2020.
Motion has been made, and I will second. Any other discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, and I will second. All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This will be a lot easier to copy over, so again, thank you all for coming in tonight, and we will talk to you soon. Thank you.